All right, it is Monday, November 18th, 6:00 PM. We'll start up with the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next we'll have the roll call.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coleman? Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Next we'll have, can we get an approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Colister, seconded by Lyon. If we have no discussion, take the roll.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
All right, item five is public participation. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to get up and address the council? Come on Chuck. Chuck, we ask you that you limit your comments to three minutes.
Okay. Well, I can't say hello in three minutes, so. I am here as part of the Green Space Fundraising Committee. Nancy Kilburg and I chair that committee. And there are a couple of resolutions on the agenda tonight that I wanted to be available in case you had any questions about the families that were involved in that. Also wanted to just real quickly give you an update of where we are on fundraising. This is considered a $1.465 million project. As of today, we have raised $1,335,232.28. Not sure where the 28 cents came, but it's a number. So just based on the generosity of everybody in Macochona, I did want to share that it's made up of 172 different giving units. And we split that out between institutional gifts, which are businesses, organizations, government entities, and grants. And then individuals are just families and individuals. Thirty-six percent of that 1.3 million number is institutional gifts. The remainder is the individual gifts, so 64%. Here's something I think is interesting, though. Of that 64% of individual gifts, which is approximately $822,000, 70% of that is coming from out-of-town givers. So people that have grown up here, maybe ran a business, maybe parents ran a business. And so we've reached out to them, and that's been very successful. I did want to say real quickly, our committee, the fundraising committee, is made up of Josh Bold, who has been really instrumental in helping us through the process. And then Tricia Wagner, who's the hometown pride coach. She's with ECIA. And then Sarah Jones, Stephanie Sagers, and Ben Davison, and then Nancy and myself. So that's all I was going to share. And if you have some other questions later on, I'll be here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience want to address? Anybody in Zoom land want to address the council? Okay, we'll move on. We have no regular presentations for tonight, so we'll get into the business. Item seven is a public hearing. And item A is a public hearing regarding approval of the proposed amendment number five to the Macochona amended and restated Unified Urban Renewal Plan.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Thanks for coming out in the rain. This is just a regular public hearing item regarding the Urban Renewal Plan Update Number Five. And so there's a resolution later in this agenda that adopts it after this public hearing. But this will allow the city to continue TIF claims, as usual, as you know them. In order to adopt an amendment, you have to have a public hearing, which this simply is. So if there's no public comment, I'll leave it to you.
Okay. Anybody in the audience care to comment? Anybody in Zoom land?
Move to close the public hearing.
Sorry, second.
Here we got a motion by Lyon, seconded by Rickrell, to close the public hearing. Do we have any objections? Take the roll.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Okay, item B is a public hearing regarding plans, specifications, and form of contract, and the estimated cost for the Destination Iowa Prairie Creek Recreational Trail and Disc Golf Course Project.
Thank you, Mayor. And again, similar to the previous item, this is a public hearing. I'll turn it over to Travis here shortly. He's engineer online from WH Chaos. But the last several weeks and several months before that, WH Chaos has been designing the rest of that Prairie Creek project. This covers everything from the disc golf course that's planned on the southwest side of the project, trail system leading from about Jacobson and Platt, and a 10-foot hot-mixed asphalt trail moving east towards Oakland Mill Pedestrian Bridge, across the bridge, and then a northside entrance park, and then leading back into the rest of the park where, you know, you could get a connection over to the rest of the trail system. So it's a huge outdoor improvement. The public hearing tonight is to receive public input on those plans and specifications, and to make ourselves available to the public if they have any questions over the project. We did open bids late last week, and those will be considered at a later time. There's a couple of questions that we want to get through with our attorneys first before awarding a contract on this.
Okay. Anybody have any comments here?
Travis, want to add a few words to this?
Good evening, everyone. I'm just here to help answer some questions if there are any. Otherwise, I'll let it up to you guys.
Okay. Anybody? Anybody else on Zoom?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion by Colister to close the public hearing?
Second.
Seconded by Bennett. We have no discussion, take the roll.
Colister?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Okay, item C is a public hearing on the proposed sale of real estate generally described as portion of parcel 146183130002500, Macochona, Iowa, approximately 12.75 acres. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Obviously, one of the best portions of the agenda tonight is moving on this public hearing and the resolutions to follow. But this is Mississippi Valley Metals, growing local business. They're on the some sort of business expansion interview with the Quad Cities, and they're looking to set up a bigger shop right here in our industrial park. So I think everyone's pretty excited about this. But this is about a public hearing regarding strictly the sale of real estate, not necessarily any development plans yet because we're not there. But this is for a real estate transaction required by code. So if you have questions on this, or anyone from the public does, we'd be happy to answer from here.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address this? Anybody on Zoom?
Motion to close the public hearing.
A motion by Colister to close it, seconded by Rickrell. If there's no discussion, take the roll.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Okay, item D is a public hearing on proposed sale of real estate generally described as portion of parcel 146183130002500, Macochona, Iowa, approximately 5.5 acres.
Thank you, Mayor. Similar circumstances for a real estate transaction. This is for at least 5.5 acres on the south side of that industrial park, being quality full environmental. So they're on a leaseback deal from PWM Companies with an option to buy PWM out. But this is actively moving forward. We've been pretty constant communication for months, if really years. But we're now at a point where this is really live for the city, so.
Okay. Anybody have any comment? Anybody on Zoom?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Got a motion by Colister to close the public hearing?
Second.
Seconded by Alinger. And if there's no comment or questions, take the roll.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Okay, we move on now to item eight, which is our consent agenda. And that consists of the minutes of the regular November 4th meeting. Bills payable through November 18th, 2024, in the amount of $678,526.12. The October financials and the renewal of a Class E alcohol license filed by Walmart Incorporated.
So moved.
Motion by Colister?
Second.
Seconded by Bennett. And if there are any discussion, take the roll.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Okay, we move on to item nine, which is old business. A is an ordinance, number 1237, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Macochona, Iowa by repealing Chapter 56 pertaining to dog and cat licenses being required. And this is the third reading.
So moved.
Motion by Colister?
Second.
Seconded by Alinger. And if we have no discussion, take the roll.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item B is ordinance 1238, amending the Code of Ordinances for the City of Macochona, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to fireworks. And this also is the third reading.
So moved.
Motion by Colister?
Second.
Seconded by Rickrell. Do we have any discussion? Then take the roll.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
You want to touch base on exactly what this means now for the fireworks ordinance?
Yep, July 3rd, 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM, July 4th, 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM. So it restricts fireworks use in the community from approximately a full week to two days. As we've discussed, it's a pretty significant first step towards limiting some, I guess, maybe the right words are noise pollution or overdoing it. But I'm sure that this will be revisited at some point, but I think that this is at least a good step to further assess your fireworks ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Item C is ordinance 1239, amending Chapter 78 Golf Card Operation of the Code of Ordinances in the City of Macochona, and this too is the third reading.
So moved.
Second.
And a motion by Colister, seconded by Bennett. And if there's no discussion, then take the roll.
Colister?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
That passes. Item D is ordinance 1240, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Macochona, Iowa by adding a new subsection amending offenses of administrative traffic enforcement. And this is also the third reading.
So moved.
Motion by Colister?
Second.
Seconded by Rickrell. If there's no discussion, then go ahead and take the roll.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item E is ordinance number 1241, amending the Chapter 99 Sewer Service Charges of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Macochona, Iowa. And this is the second reading.
So moved.
Motion by Colister?
Second.
Seconded by Bennett. And if we have no discussion, take the roll.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
We want to suspend the rolls until the third reading.
We have six, and that's a supermajority. If you don't have any further discussion, you feel this is worthy of it, by all means.
I just have a hard time when we're raising rates.
Okay.
Okay. We make it to item F, which is ordinance number 1242, amending the, amending Chapter 92 Water Rates of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Macochona. And this is also the second reading.
So moved.
Motion by Colister?
Second.
Seconded by Bennett. And if we have no more discussion, take the roll.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Okay, that also passes. Making out a new business where item A is a resolution authorizing sale of real estate generally described as a portion of parcel 146183130002500, Macochona, Iowa, approximately 5.5 acres to PWM Companies LLC.
So moved.
Motion by Colister?
Second.
Seconded by Lyon? Seconded by Lyon? If there's no discussion, take the roll.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item B is a resolution authorizing sale of real estate generally described as a portion of parcel 146183130002500, Macochona, Iowa, approximately 12.75 acres to Mississippi Valley Metals LLC.
So moved.
Motion by Colister?
Second.
Seconded by Rickrell. Any discussion? Take the roll.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item C is a resolution determining an area of the city to be economically, economically development and blighted area, and that the rehabilitation, conservation, redevelopment, deployment, or combination thereof of such an area is necessary in the interest of the public health and safety or welfare of the residents of the city, designating such an area as appropriate for urban renewal projects and adopting Amendment Number Five to Macochona Amendment and Restated Urban Renewal Plan. Want to explain all that?
Well, related to our public hearing, it's not as much as it would seem. It is renewing an urban renewal plan so we can continue to make TIF claims. So there's no financial liability in this for us.
Okay. Okay, got a, got a motion by Colister, seconded by Lyon. Any more discussion on this? Then take the roll.
Colister?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item D is a resolution approving final plans for the Summit and Main Street Intersection Project. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome to some new stuff. So this is a bigger agenda, so I do apologize for this, but the next few should be much better. This is the final plan approval stage for the IDOT project. Well, it's our project, but it's an IDOT letting. So County Engineer Jaden Sheckel's been very, very helpful. John met with all of the corner owners today to talk over the project, and we have temporary easements signed at this point. So we're completely ready to go for bidding, and it's going to happen here in the summer. So the summer being summer of '25, so we're all pretty excited.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay, we got a motion by Colister?
Second.
Seconded by Alinger. And if we have no discussion, take the roll.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item E is a resolution awarding CNB Enterprises LLC a downtown incentive facade grant in the amount of $15,000 upon verifying, verification of completed work and final qualified bills.
Thank you, Mayor, and this is somewhat a familiar item, but another new one. Our Downtown Incentives Committee met last week and reviewed two applications. Both are on this agenda tonight, and this is a recommendation from that committee to approve $15,000 in reimbursable work for a project that's going to redo effectively the front of 203 South Main Street. So it's under new ownership. They have a vision and some plans, and have supplied all the required materials and recommended for your approval tonight.
Okay.
So moved.
Motion by Colister?
Second.
Seconded by Bennett. And if we have any discussion? Take the roll.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item F is a resolution approving Theodore Straight, a downtown incentives commercial interior and upper-story housing re-renovation grant in the amount of $15,000.
Thank you, Mayor, and I've never called Ted Theodore, but it's, it's nice to know what, what reimbursement, assuming approval, it's nice to know what a reimbursement would be payable to. So Ted's with us tonight if you have any specific questions. But Ted was the second application for this round in his work at 138 South Main Street, being an upper-story housing renovation and a first-floor renovation for commercial interior recommended. So you might recall that this was part of a CDBG application that never moved forward because of a larger cost example. And I know Ted's got a long road ahead of him for personal cost outside of the application itself. So, you know, just thank you for being interested in expanding the business downtown.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, got a motion by Lyon, seconded by Colister. Do we have any discussion on this? And take the roll.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item G is a resolution designating Green Space Redevelopment Naming as Gloveik Community Park. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought there was more to that for some reason, I'm sorry. With this particular item, I might defer to Chuck here for some extra comments, but I haven't been in contact with the donor. Nancy Kilburg and Chuck have, but this is, I don't know if Macochona has had a reference or precedent of naming something specifically. So we did take a look at some city Dubuque memos that have been produced there on what happens with naming rights. The key language in the resolution, I think, that is critical for you, is that so as long as these assets exist and the space exists, that it continues to be named as such, given the donation agreement. So what's before you tonight is a declaration that it's going to be named Gloveik Community Park. Chuck, I don't know how much this person wants to share who they are at this point, but this is, I think, where I would like your help.
Yeah, so we're very honored. The newspaper is doing an article tomorrow. The Gloveiks, the parents were Al and Marge Gloveik. Al worked for the county shop, and she worked at the hospital for a long time. This gift is made in the name of Frank and Barb Reckerman. Barb is the youngest of nine Gloveik kids. I don't know, Mark, if you remember, was she a grade of one or two?
She was a grade behind me.
So 1982 graduate of Macochona High School, and then went on to graduate from the University of Dubuque. She was involved with Go Daddy from the very beginning. She was one of the instrumental people involved in that, and that's what led to some of her personal wealth. Frank is from Lost Nation. His mother, Melba, was an on-time teacher in the Lost Nation or in some of those school districts. The money has all been received. I did want to make one mention, when I talked about the 1.3 million that we've raised, $910,000 is actually cash in hand. And then we're expecting another large amount before construction is done. Any other questions or anything else I can provide on that?
Would just real quick, with the discussions that we've had surrounding naming this a park or adding this as a park, there will be ordinance at a later time to designate some of the extra rules that might be associated with event application in this space, because there are certain park rules and ordinances that a typical event downtown in the space, such as Fireball or the Summer Concert Series, is probably in a little bit of conflict with the way our ordinance is currently written. So we're going to explore maybe some of the best ways to have some of these events and an ordinance and accurately identify that for our event application. So that is just one special note. I want to kind of assure you and assure you that just because this has a park-associated name, that there's some things that I think we need to kind of bring into some, some consistent space here for how we use that as a gathering space. And last but not least, beyond the people that, that give money in, you know, very large amounts, Chuck and Nancy have been just absolutely unbelievable with their leadership in this and raising the funds so that it's possible. And so I want to thank Chuck, I want to thank everything that you've put into this, and I would like for you guys to join me in a round of applause for Mr. Chuck Current and Nancy.
I will make one, thank you very much, I will make one mention. Barb and Frank have one sibling that still lives in Macochona, so it's Terry and Dennis Erig. And that couple will be honored in the monument presentation for that, so. Any questions?
Okay, thank you, Chuck.
Thank you.
We got a motion by Colister?
Second.
Seconded by Rickrell. Any discussion? Then take the roll.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item A, which is a resolution designating Gloveik Community Park's stage name as Bob and Ann and Bob Osterhaus Stage. and Bob Osterhaus Stage.
Thank you, Mayor, and kind of following the previous one, which is extremely similar, the Ann and Bob Osterhaus family all contributed to the donation threshold for the naming of the stage. So I had a curious, well, one, you can imagine how many children are involved with this, and I caught myself wondering what the GDP in the United States is of the Osterhaus descendants, so there's quite a bit of sharing that went into this. Did you have something else to add, Chuck?
Yeah, just one thing I will add. This stage naming doesn't have a gift from Bob and Ann themselves. They've been very generous outside of that gift, but this $150,000 is 83, represents 83 children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren of Ann and Bob. So tremendously generous gift to that family.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we got a motion by Colister, seconded by Alinger. And if we have no discussion, take the roll.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item I is a resolution approving the purchase of a Flygate, is that how it's pronounced? Flygate Lift Station Pump Replacement at the South Slope Lift Station for $17,673.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll turn it over to Jen if you want to talk on this next two items.
So this is just the cost of doing business. I've got a couple lift stations, lift station pumps that went down. This pump here is only six years old. We are replacing it with the same pump. The pump prior to this that was approved a few months back is a lift station pump as well, and we decided to upgrade it and see how long it would last. I thought we could wait with this one and maybe do the same thing, but this one's causing us problems. This is one of our biggest stations, and it's only a two-pump station. In the future, we talked about this with the last time we got this approved, that we would like, it's got a spot for three pumps, but three pumps have never been in it. So I think in the future, we will add a third pump, but I want a pump that's going to last a while, AKA explaining in the next one, you can see in my description that that pump is 24 years old. It's in the industrial lift station. The pump or the station doesn't run a lot, it doesn't get used a lot, but that's what we'd like to see in the future for all of our lift stations to get to that point where we last a whole lot longer than five or six years for the cost that they cost.
Okay, we got a motion by Colister.
Second.
Seconded by Rickrell. Any discussion here? Then take the roll.
Colister?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Yeah, that motion passes. Next is a resolution approving the purchase of a Flygate Lift Station Pump Replacement at the industrial lift station in the amount of $25,710. Same story.
This is the one that's 24 years old.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Lyon, seconded by Bennett. Any discussion? Then take the roll.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item K is a resolution approving change order number two increase in the amount of $8,424.90 submitted by KE Flat Rate, Flat Work Incorporated for the Stormwater Levy Project.
Thank you, Mayor, Public Works Committee processed this proposal at our last meeting. Long story short, and reminder, this is a large $2 million plus job, so this is our second change order again for a sub $10,000 change order, not sitting too bad. But there were some electrical circuits that were missed in the design and during the electrical work estimate, and they're obviously clear and needed at this point. So going back sometime, it was discussed with Jen whether or not it was a want versus need, and I was told it was need, I processed it through, and so just at a moment where it needs to get through council, and there's nothing else hanging out there surprisingly, and this is for your adoption tonight. Any other questions on this? It's just about finished even down there, so.
So moved.
Okay, got a motion by Colister, seconded by Rickrell. Any discussion? Then take the roll.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Next is item I, and it's a resolution approving development and financial support in the amount of $40,000 for Sacred Heart addition payable out of the American Rescue Plan Act Fund.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This one was discussed with their Finance and Personnel Committee back in February, but it never had a contract behind it and agreements behind it until just recently, which was nerve-wracking because we have to commit all our ARPA dollars by December 31st. Childcare was one of the items that we wanted to focus on for our ARPA planning and adopted through the city budget. We're at a point now where they've bid it, and they'll bid across three, and there was quite the spread, $627,000 from Reed. They're proceeding forward with a bit of a gap, there's nothing else asked of the city here besides this contribution. The financials are different than something like a Sunshine was, where CDBG was involved, and so there was extra contribution involved. Put this together, plus the Sunshine adds about 50 childcare spots from Makoka. So if people are moving here, cross your fingers, they actually have somewhere to put their kids and get them into a good learning system early. So this is a major win for you all. Feel like we're doing well on many fronts, this is one of them. Hopefully, we can get some builders here soon, and we have people thinking about coming back home here to Iowa. So I recommend this tonight. Was not an easy lift, but we're finally at a point where this is our last ARPA commitment for the city to process through, and they'll have until the end of '26 to finish the work, so.
Yeah.
So moved.
Okay, we got a motion by Colister, seconded by Rickrell. Any discussion on this? Then take the roll.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item M, Resolution Amending the Original Resolution Approved on March 20, 2023, Said Resolution Approving and Authorizing a Loan and Disbursement Agreement with the Iowa Finance Authority and Authorizing and Providing for the Issuance of Sewer Revenue Capital Loan Note, Series 2023A. In order to provide for funding for sponsored project under the terms of the new note to be issued in the principal amount of $11,500, $11,577,000, which includes approval of supplemental tax exemption certificate.
Thank you, Mayor, so much to say, this is a resolution getting us ready to close the sponsored project financing, which is addition of principal reduction of interest, and you still have the net neutral kind of debt repayment associated with their wastewater plant. Nothing new, it's just the closing of this note.
Motion by Lyon, seconded by Rickrell. If we have any discussion, then take the roll.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
That passes. Item N is a resolution approving and authorizing a form of loan agreement and authorizing and providing for the issuance of a $900,000 taxable general obligation capital loan note, Series 2024B, and levying tax to pay said note.
Thank you, Mayor, similar, we discussed this at our previous meeting, and this is the resolution allowing us to start in with executing the documents associated with this, about $900,000 positive balance in our debt service fund. So I've stated in here, it creates no zero, it creates zero added debt liability, which is a truth. Usually, our bond council will be reporting to the county, this raises a property tax rate by $1.10 or something, it's zero because we have the cash. So the intention here is to help pay for the wastewater plant and keep the rates down a little bit more than they otherwise would be, and that's the intention in fair and equitable use of this fund. And we discussed a little bit of this at our Finance and Personnel Committee, and we just think it's a good way to get this funds out of the city's coffers.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay, got a motion by Colister.
Second.
Seconded by Alinger. Do we have any discussion? Then take the roll.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. We make it to item O, which is a resolution authorizing Grant Administration Agreement with East Central Intergovernmental Agency in the amount of $9,045 for 24 ECBG-0006.
Thank you, Mayor, and I realized when I read this earlier today that I neglected to say that this contract as estimated by ECIA was actually written into the grant application. So this is grant reimbursable. The project itself was 10% city CIPs, 90% funded by this grant, so we do need someone to manage this, and I'm hoping that ECIA was able to finish this off for us and get our lights a little bit more energy efficient. Do you have any questions on this?
I guess not.
So moved.
Okay, got a motion by Bennett.
Second.
Seconded by Alinger. And if we have no discussion, take the roll.
Colister?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item P is a resolution setting a public hearing for December 2, 2024 at 6:00 p.m. on the proposed amendment to our zoning code.
Thank you, Mayor, this sets a public hearing simply for the next council meeting. If you recall, the duplex zoning language did go well at the zoning board, so this is going to be ready for your consideration at the next meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Colister.
A second.
Seconded by Rickrell. If we have no discussion, then take the roll.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
That one passes. Item Q is a resolution affirming support for Prairie Creek Recreation Area Project